So good morning, everybody. Again, this is Joy Warland. I'm the consultant for Continue Education in Small and Rural Libraries at the Department of Libraries. And I'm so excited about this workshop and also to see the turnout for it. We have a good mix of trustees and librarians. And I think that the theme of this workshop, the power of trustees and how to champion your library to Select Boards and beyond, is perfect for a group that's a mix of trustees and librarians. Because when the championing really works well is when people work together on it. And so we have some great panelists to talk about different ways that they have done work in this area from different perspectives. And we're going to welcome them in a minute. I do want to say, before we get started on today's session, I want to put in a plug for two sessions we have coming up in November, which are specifically for the same audience of trustees and ideally trustees and directors together. There are two sessions on creating and editing and updating library policies. So there's going to be one sort of overview informational session, and then an opportunity to go home and work together on a policy and come back and share about that experience. So there's information on that on our website, and I'll put the link in at the end of this session. But I just wanted to remind everybody of that because the audience is very suited for that as well. So the theme of this morning is really about spreading the word about the value of the library, which probably everybody on this call knows. But the idea is to get that word out to people who may not know about it, people who may be very familiar with the library and understand that the library is doing great things, they have a great collection, they do good programming, they're working with community organizations more and more, becoming a community hub, they stayed open and offered services during the pandemic. So people see all these good things, but not a lot of people really understand the work and the cost that goes into that. So one of the things we're going to talk about this morning is just how to articulate that and some data to share about that and just some advice and language that people can use, those of us that are very, live this life, but to share it out with people who are stakeholders and may be able to help with funding and promoting the library in other ways. So we have Gary DeZiel from the UVM Extension Program, Kevin Pearson, and a trustee from the Pearson Library, and Cindy Weber from the Stowe Library, who are going to help with that. And I think we'll just go ahead and turn it over to Gary first. So, thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Joy. Please tell me if something goes awry, if you can't see me or hear me. And now I'm going to try to share my PowerPoint slides. So hopefully this will work. If you could just tell me if it's...
It is working, yes, yes. Looks great.
Okay, great. So what I wanted to do today was just to share a little background in HR and wage benefit information, and just to give you a little bit of a context. And it's really meant to complement the other panelists' inspirational thoughts. And I really do mean inspirational. And because they've lived as a library trustee, they've lived as a library director, and they have some great stories to tell. So I'm really focusing on HR and wage and benefits a little, and I'm going to go pretty fast, but Joy will have these slides to share with anybody who wants them or to the whole group after this, after the session. So here's what I'm going to be talking about. I'm going to be talking a little bit about the Great Resignation. I think you probably have heard a little bit about that if you read the popular press. I have some wage and benefit data. I also have workers' rights to benefits, livable wage stats, and then a little bit about budgeting for your strategic goals. So the Great Resignation, or it's also called the Transition to Tsunami, is that right now, according to a survey from the Society for Human Resource Management, about four out of 10 people, workers in the United States, are actively searching for a new job. So there's this huge thing going on, and you've probably seen that in some of the listservs of a lot of library jobs open. And a survey in the UK found that, on average, a person says that they're fine 14 times a week, but they only mean it like one out of five times. So right now, people aren't so fine, and it's really affecting worker engagement and what people want out of their job. And there's been also in the popular press this thing about COVID clarity. People have discovered over the last year and a half of the pandemic of what is really important to them. And so better compensation, pay has always driven workers to find new jobs, to seek new opportunities. But it's not only pay. It's better benefits. Benefits are really vitally important to United States workers. And even more in the last, this COVID clarity thing, is better work and life balance. About four out of 10 people report that's why they're looking for a new job, is this work-life balance. Also, career advancement is part of the thing and desire to make a career change. A lot of people are looking at just like, what is my skill set? How can I apply it in other places? And what would be a great thing to be able to do? As a trustee, or as a library director too, or whatever your position in the library hierarchy is, I'm a trustee. I should have mentioned that when I started for the Georgia Public Library. But belonging is huge right now, is that in this research, and again, this is from the Society for Human Resource Management, an article there, it's on that 10 out of, four out of 10 employees have the greatest sense of belonging when their colleagues check in with them. So one thing that you can kind of like take home about managing employees better is just exercising empathetic curiosity, active listening, because trust is built over time. So frequent, just simply asking people how they're doing at work and at home really makes a huge difference to employees, staff members, and just people, humans in general, you know? So here's a couple of examples you could use if you're concerned about supporting your employees, your library staff better. I said I was going to go fast, and I apologize for this graphic. It's really probably kind of almost impossible to read if you have a small laptop or you're looking on this, on your phone or something. But again, you'll get this in your mailbox after the presentations. This is, this is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns 2020 data on wages and benefits. And this is average hourly rate by position type. And this is for municipalities. 60% of public libraries in Vermont are municipal libraries, a department within a municipality. And you can see that I've highlighted in darker color, library, librarian, and library senior, which is that first dark colored bar, a little longer than the bottom two, which are assistant libraries and library support. You can see in the hierarchy of the municipality, we are paying lower salaries than in other positions. And even when you consider librarian compared to other department heads, it, this position is lagging behind other department head positions. So I think there's a great opportunity to improve upon that, and we have in Georgia. We've really, really tried to work on that. But we also, when you do that, you have to be aware of other department heads' pay. Some towns have a lower pay for other department heads as well, as well as a town administrator. And there's clearly part of this is a gender gap because of the, primarily female in the positions over history. And this is something that we have had to try to break this paradigm. But just, just to put it in perspective, we can do a much better job in paying librarians. If you are an incorporated library, 35% of libraries are incorporated in Vermont, there is nonprofit compensation reports available. And here is an example. This is, for instance, all organizations by budget size $250,000 or less budget, and there's information out there on nonprofit compensation, if you'd like to get a hold of that. I think Vermont Department of Libraries too is also trying to create some survey on salaries, which would be very, very helpful in coming, in understanding what we can do about salaries in the future. Benefits are really important. Full-time employees, this is 123 towns reporting. This is, again, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns report. Health insurance is offered to virtually 100%, well, 99% of full-time employees. And you know, what is full-time? Generally, it's 30 or 32 hours per week would be considered full-time or above. Dental insurance, life insurance, you know, benefits enhance worker well-being, and you can never underestimate the impact of offering benefits on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because, you know, without benefits, boy, it's really hard. It's very difficult to get through life. These are just another example of what benefits that employers are viewing as most important right now. Healthcare is very important, but there are other things that you can do as well to make your workers' lives more enjoyable. Flexible work, paid leave, family-friendly wellness, that is offering a health savings account, health reimbursement account, and retirement, retirement also, so that they can be prepared at the end of their career to live a good rest of their life. Things that we should also be aware of is that workers do have rights in Vermont, and there are a number of things that we sometimes forget about. For instance, like the earned sick time leave, sick time law in Vermont, if you're making, if you work a certain number of hours per week, on average, over 20, then you are legally entitled to paid sick time. But I have this QR code for you on the presentation, and this will bring you to the site for Vermont Workplace Rights and Wages, about everything from nursing mothers in the workplace to military leave rights, short-term family leave, all these things are rights as workers in Vermont. With caveats, of course, depending on how many hours you work a week and who you work for, municipal, nonprofit, for-profit. Also, I just wanted to put this up on the screen. This is the 2020 Basic Needs Budget Wages, done by the, prepared by the Vermont Legislative Joint Fiscal Office. And I circled the bottom, the VLCT average librarian salary is around $20 per hour, or about $40,000 a year. And if you have two adults who have, are both earning that amount, then you're just squeaking by, according to the Vermont Legislative Joint Fiscal Office. And you can see some of these numbers, I hope you can see. This, again, isn't the best slide if you have a small screen. But if you're a, if you're a single parent, you've got two children, you have to be at about $67,000, $68,000 a year to meet basic needs in Vermont, rural Vermont, higher in urban Vermont. And then as another thing, last thing I wanted to add is budgeting strategically. You know, if you wanted, if you have a strategic goal of increasing wages, increasing benefits, then you have to think how you might be able to, how you do it, how you get from X to Y or Y to Z. It might be a stepwise procedure. For instance, if your library considered, like we want to do, we want to offer health insurance, well, this can be up to $20,000, $25,000 a year. So you have to think about how you want to implement health insurance or retirement, if you want it to be matching, how that impacts your budget, how you plan for that budget over the next two or three years. So think about timing and a long-term plan. So I just wanted to be very brief because Ruth and Kevin and Cindy have a lot more than I to offer about their experiences on the job. But if you had any questions about budgeting or any HR questions, you may contact me. My email is myname@ubm.edu, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, have any conversations with you, and as well as meet with trustees or whoever you'd like me to meet with if I can. So, thank you, Joy. That was it for me. I'm going to stop sharing.
All right. Thank you so much, Gary. Gary is such a great help to us here at the Department of Libraries with HR questions, budget questions, and he was on vacation for a couple of weeks recently, and we were just really lost without him. So I'm very glad to have him here this morning, and he has been very helpful with libraries one-on-one too. So do take advantage of that offer he made. So I would love to hear from Cindy Weber. Now Cindy is the director of the Stowe Free Library, and one of the things I've been very impressed with, with that library, is the pay that the employees get. Because part of the struggle, of course, I mean, I've been on the hiring side of this, and I've been applied for jobs. It's very hard to get people to come and work at your library for really low wages. And if, and I know I worked at one library where we had a pretty large staff, but everybody was working a different number of hours and making a different salary, and it was very hard when, there's a lot of turnover there because there were all these small jobs. So Cindy has done a great job of having a sustainable workforce, and I would love to hear more about that. Thanks for being here, Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you, Joy. That was a very nice introduction. So I am from the Stowe Free Library. I'm the director here. I've been here for nine years. Previously, I was at the Williston Library. I worked 10 years there as a cataloger. I was always impressed with my director when I was in Williston because she always knew the demographics of the library in the community. And so that's something that I tried to learn as quickly as I could here at the library so that I could, you know, address issues and make changes. And so Joy had talked about wages, and we are, in nine years that I've been here, I have restructured our staffing at several different times because there might be a, might be an opening or something, and then I reevaluate how everything is flowing, and so I've made changes. My first change was probably about five years ago, when, or probably maybe seven years ago, when I changed everybody to full-time. It was just easier, and at that time, I was able to raise the wages at that time. Now I'm working on, I had three career, or three staff members leave, so now I'm working on trying to figure out the best way to replace those staff members and to rework our job descriptions to make everything flow a little bit better. So my talk here is about how to address issues, identify opportunities, and manage change at your library. You first have to understand the library's history and know its demographics, and I was talking about my past director and how well she knew that. So our library, Stowe Free Library, was founded in 1866, and we had 50 books and a town appropriation of $100 to start the library then. And we were the first library in the state that started, the town started to appropriate funds for a public library according to a state law of 1865. So that's our claim for fame. We have, let's see, the town is, the public library is a town department, and so we are a municipal library. We are budgeted mostly by the town, 90% by the town, a little bit of budget from our friends and our, the library board, and what we get from the state Department of Libraries. We serve a population of about 4,000. We have a patronage of 6,500, a lot of out-of-towners, a collection of 25,000, a space of 6,000 square feet. We have five librarians and a part-time custodian, so I'm included in that five, so I have four underneath me. We have a small volunteer pool and a budget of $500,000. So we're very fortunate here. We're really well-supported, but as every library, you deal with issues and problems as they come along. I think the main thing, when you're dealing with something, you need to understand your library's governance, including the roles and responsibilities of each entity according to a government document or established roles or an MOU. I know a lot of libraries have been working with their friends to do a memorandum of understanding, to try to figure out the roles and responsibilities of each player at the library. Our Stowe Free, the Stowe Free Library is governed by the town. It is according to the town Stowe Charter that was established in 2010. So the players are the Select Board. The Select Board hires the town manager. The town manager hires the director, according to, with some suggestions from the board, and then the director hires the employees underneath it. The town manager is in charge of human resources. The library board here is not. Our library board, according to this new charter, is strictly advisory, and they are in charge of helping me with programming and collection development, helping to support me with that, and they help me with policymaking. So any policies that they come up with, we have to abide by. And they also have their own bequests, their own investment pool money that they are totally responsible for on managing that and investing that. The town oversees it in the fact that they just keep an eye on it, and they make sure that it is on the up and up with an annual review, but they have total, they're totally in charge of those funds. So I'm in charge of my personnel. I deal with my director, my town manager, that's who my boss is. I also deal with the board, and we have a two-way communication. We have a two-way communication with the friends. My staff have a one-way communication with me, but then they also communicate with their union director if they so choose. So our department is unionized. I'm not, but my staff are. So it's a complicated mix of different roles and responsibilities, and you have to know where to, where your issue is and how to address that with whatever party that you're working with. So my main thing is to make sure that all the players understand each role and responsibility. So I give out orientation packets to new staff members, to new board members, and even to like the friends if they want to kind of understand the background behind everything. So again, you know, it's about who's responsible for what and where your communication structure lies in your chain of command. So as an example, I never interact with my, with the Select Board. My town manager interacts for me. If I was invited to the Select Board, then I would interact. But I always take my issues to my town manager or to the other players that are here at the library. So managing change by addressing a problem or seizing an opportunity, you define your issue. So I've had staff vacancies, those are my issues. They were my issues years ago, and it's my issue right now. So then I decide whether I want to continue as-is and just replace those staff members, or if I want to reconfigure some things. So right now, I'm restructuring the staff, and the roles that were here previously are historical, and I think it was based on what people's strengths were at the time. They didn't make a lot of sense to me as far as the skill set, and you know, so I'm rearranging, so one is more technical position that, I've already hired a circulation librarian position, but I'm hiring a tech services and an IT person because I think that's more, you know, detail-oriented and more IT-oriented. And then the other position I'm hiring now is an assistant director, who is also going to be doing adult services and ILL. And then that person will also back up the circulation. So I feel like, you know, I'm dealing with a service-oriented position and a technical position. So that's how I'm working that right now. So I'm restructuring the staff, and then I determine who my entities are and who my governing entities are and who my support entities are. So my governing support, or my governing for restaffing is going to be my town manager, who I have to talk with, and then the union. If the town manager needs to talk to the union about making changes or whatever, I don't directly talk to the union. And then my support group is my staff that I have right now, and my board of, my library trustees, which they're always very supportive. So I take those ideas, restructuring what I planned, I'm very detailed and systematic. I take those ideas to those different support groups and talk to them and see if they, I need to tweak something if something doesn't make sense. But I've had a lot of support on the restructuring of my staff right now, and so I'm going forward. And so I've talked to my town manager in my finance, the finance officer in town, to try to figure out how we would work this all out. I had to make, come up with new job descriptions, and then we had to look at the wage scale and then determine all of that. So you present what you're planning, but you also realize that you might have to make some changes or whatever. My main thing is I think that when you are addressing issues or you're making changes, you have to be aware that sometimes your ask might be too big. You might have some past grievances or biases or unclear roles or past rulings or whatever that may make your moving forward on this issue or this problem a little bit more difficult. So you have to understand that you might have to adapt the way that you're looking at this project or looking at how you want to address the change. I think, I think that's pretty much everything that I have here, other than, I just think the main thing with everything, with any position that you have, is communication. So I think communicating with my supporters and getting support with that so that we can rally and move forward. And then if I needed to have some testament or whatever from my board, they would, they would talk to my town manager regarding that. So I think that's all that I have. Basically, I'm very systematic, and I like to have everything structured before I move forward with anything. And so I hope that was helpful.
Thank you so much, Cindy. A couple of things I really liked about that is that you clearly talked about the different roles that different players have, but also that there's a collaborative part of it as well. So you know, know what everybody's roles is, are, know who to go to when you have an issue, but that also it is a joint effort. So again, that's like one of the things I like about this meeting today is that there's a mix of people here that are all invested in different ways in the library. So thank you, Cindy. And we'll move on to Kevin Unreth and Ruth Hagerman from the Pearson Library now.
Thanks so much. Can you hear me okay, Joy?
Yes, sounds great.
So I'll go ahead and get started. I'm excited about this topic, and I'm also really feel like I'm learning a lot here as well. I was taking some notes. Gary always has such amazing data, and it, I think it would be shocking to people outside our profession, but unfortunately, not that surprising for people who have worked in libraries to know how little we make compared to other professions. I liked what he talked about with empathetic listening as well. So that's a great tip. And Cindy, I have to say, that memorandum of understanding idea between the friends, the trustees, and the Select Board, that is something I'm going to steal. So we currently, I think, are dealing with staffing as our big issue, but what we were dealing with a few years ago, I would say, was our building as our, if we had one big issue we were working on here to manage change, as you talked about, Cindy, I think it was our building. And so Ruth, would you like to talk a little bit about that process, and then I'll come back in after you're done?
Sure, I can do that. It's not a problem. So I don't know, you know, how much people know about the Pearson Library, but in 2016, I'm a little fuzzy on dates now, COVID, I feel like I've lost track of where we are. We did manage to get onto the ballot and pass a $6.5 million bond for the construction of the new building. And then over the course of the year, during construction, we raised over $1 million, which we had been told was not going to be possible. So I thought I'd just give you a couple of points, how we kind of progressed as the board of trustees. So I was on the board at that time. I stepped off in 2020 when my term ended. So to get something onto the ballot, you actually need the full support of the town manager, and you need at least a majority of the Select Board to vote for it. So that's a tricky thing. The town manager, we were very lucky, we had a new town manager who had put himself through college working for the New York Public Libraries. So he was a very strong supporter of libraries, and you can't, you know, you can't do anything about that one. The Select The select board majority, again, was sort of serendipitous. We had some people on there at that time who had very strong pro-library feelings. They had had family members who had been trustees. But of course, select boards come and go. And so you just kind of have to continuously, I think, put your best foot forward with your select board. So a couple of the tricks that we did, I think, to help get the ballot passed, the bond passed, and for the fundraising, the first thing you really need to do, and you already know this, but maybe you haven't thought of it quite the same way. You need to really embed yourself directly into the community. So you have a community at large and then that community is split out into special interest groups. So for example, we have a historical society. We have a Rotary that represents businesses. We have a very active parent organization through the schools. Lots of other little sectors like that. We basically had trustees on anything we could get a trustee onto. And we had done that as we were moving towards the bond. Some of them had been long-term members, for example, of the Historical Society. Some of them were newer members. And part of that is just so you always have someone there to promote your library. But the other reason is you really need to be on these groups to understand what the groups want. And that allows you to not only pitch your message directly to them, but it gives you a broader perspective and it might give you a new way to think about the library. So because we had this new interest in being on the Rotary, that really helped us to see how one of the things we needed to provide in our new space was, was small areas, strong internet, kind of working with the business community. And that I think has become much more important with COVID. So I would suggest that you sit down and get a big piece of paper and write down all the things you can think of in town. And you can find that on Front Porch Forum often. The second thing is obviously you need to be visible in the community. And I think that we all say we want to be visible in the community. And the trustees during that almost two-year period were, you couldn't go anywhere in Shelburne without seeing them. We had a table. We carded that table everywhere. We went to every farmer's market for two years. We went to every sports event we could think of. We were at elections. We were at town meeting. We were at all the local celebrations where the town comes together for Halloween and for holidays. We were at local businesses. We were at restaurants. It was, what we were trying to do was make it so that if you went somewhere in Shelburne, you had a pretty good chance of running into that library table. It's a lot of work. And, you know, your trustees, some trustees just aren't going to be able to help do that, but they might be able to help in other ways. And then the final thing that I think libraries still are struggling a little bit with, we all are, is visibility on the internet. And, you know, I'm not going to tell you all the internet tools because I'm not really very internet savvy, but we found that being visible on the internet and having kind of an interlinked internet community really helped with fundraising. Because it gives you a regular way of reaching out to a larger community. You don't have to use email that people sometimes ignore. People will get pinged on their phone when a fundraising event went out. We had some matching and people liked that. So however you can make yourself visible on the internet to regularly communicate with people and encourage them to, you know, reach out to their friends and become friends of their friends. It's a, it's just a big networking system that's freely available. And I suggest that you, you figure out ways to do that, even if you think in your town, well, you know, this isn't going to work. I think you'll be surprised at who you can contact. We actually have contacts in other communities because of that. So I think those are really the biggest tips I can give you. And, you know, I still feel I'm a strong library supporter. I see Kevin pretty regularly. So, and I think this is a great meeting to have. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Ruth. And Ruth was really, along with a couple other trustees, the driving force behind our, our new building. So the project was, before it even went on the ballot, there were, was 10 years of work put in by trustees and library directors to even get to that point. But really pushing it over the finish line, Ruth had a lot to do with that. So I can't thank you enough for making that happen. Just to pick up on a few of those points, and I think it was a great summary of the work that, that went on. One is, I think you just can't do too much advocacy. There's, if there's something you're thinking about doing, you should do it, as long as it's legal. So you can't tell people to vote yes on a bond vote, as an example of something that's illegal. But you can tell them to vote. You could ask them to vote and give them the, the benefits and the costs. So do everything you possibly can do. Another thing that I think really helped us with the building project was getting a little bit of seed money. So we were able to develop some plans that people could look at and also engage an architect to help us start thinking about it and a consultant. So if you get us some money that's donated or if you can reach out to people that you think may be able to help and get that outside seed money, it's a great thing to be able to say, we received private donations to be able to think about this. No public money was spent for, for the work that, that we're doing to re-envision where the library is going. So, but I really, I don't have too much I can add to, to what you said about the building. And Joy, with your permission, I wanted to switch a little bit what I was going to talk about because I, I get the sense, we were talking a lot about staffing and I wanted to talk a little about, a little bit about advocacy for staffing and, and the library study bill. Is that okay if I switch over to that as a, as a?
That would be great because it is all related. And I just, before you go on though, I just want to say, Ruth, thank you so much. I, I loved, you had some new ideas that I hadn't heard before about like getting the library out there, going to sporting events, for example. I had never thought of that. And, and I think, like you said at the beginning, we always say that we want to be out in the community more. And then you had just so many good concrete ways of suggestions for doing that. So thank you so much for that.
Okay, now I'm going to, I'm going to back up and list a few more of those and then I'm going to move on. So we went to our local restaurants, the Shelburne Vineyard, our book sale, Wake Robin Retirement Community, our Halloween parade, Waldorf School, Community School, the supermarket, town meeting. We went to all of the town committees that might have any interest in this and some that probably had no interest. We went to the, a couple of restaurants. Pie Day at Shelburne Orchard was probably my favorite because we got pie. I think I got to judge the pie. We went to the local preschools and the entire time we carted around a two-foot by three-foot balsa wood model that was encased in a large, heavy piece of acrylic. And we managed to make it to all of these events without dropping the model. So that was, that was a win. All right. So to get back to staffing, because honestly, that's our biggest need right now. We built a wonderful new library with twice as much square footage and five times as many meeting rooms. And we're struggling to keep up with the demand. So we have an ask coming up with our select board for another full-time position, as Cindy indicated. We'll see where that goes. We definitely need it. And we did a lot of work to try to put in our strategic plan why it was needed and, and why, why we're making that ask. And right now, just like with the building, we're doing a lot of education for individual select board members and for our board to be able to talk cogently about why we're asking for that additional full-time position. So making those connections and doing that legwork, I think, is the most important part for getting those new positions, if that's, if that's what your library needs. But I wanted to talk about Vermont as a whole and what we might do to try to address some of the salary inequities that Gary mentioned in his presentation for librarians. Now clearly, this is not a Vermont problem. This is a nationwide problem. It's probably an international problem because librarianship was traditionally a profession that was mostly women and women are sorely underpaid for the work they do historically. So this is not just a Vermont problem. But part of what exacerbates the problem here in Vermont is we have no statewide funding for libraries. And I wanted to talk just briefly about what is going on right now to try to create an environment where we might propose statewide funding to the legislature and have them be sympathetic to that cause. So just like for building the library building here in Shelburne, advocates, including the Library Association and others, were working for the last six years to make a case for a library study bill to be proposed. So that was, I, I know going back to 2015, we were talking about that probably further. But it wasn't until 2019 that a bill was actually proposed. In 2020, it made it forward in committee. And then finally, in 2021, despite the challenges of passing any legislation since they were dealing with COVID, it actually made it through, out of committee, was signed by the governor and now is, has been enacted. So currently, you've probably seen a couple of emails, that library study committee is asking for stories from librarians about the work that they do. And if you don't do anything else to try to make this move forward, think about your unmet needs. Think about what your library does and try to share those studies when Tom and others from the Department of Libraries ask you for them. Because we are in the middle of what I think is about a 10-year process of potentially getting statewide funding for libraries. So I just laid out what was the last seven years and maybe, maybe 12 years. I'm not sure. But a lot of work has gone into making this library study actually happen. And we're there now. It is happening. And so it's very important that we participate. And the reason for that is one of the best ways to be able to increase wages for librarians around the state is to actually get statewide funding for libraries. I know it sounds simple, but it would be a huge step forward for us to be able to pay our employees more if we were able to move forward with some kind of bill for statewide funding. So right now, the study is going on and I expect that it will find, assuming we all participate and share our stories, that there are unmet needs for Vermont's libraries and that they are significant. And that they have to do with our buildings. They have to do with our collections. They have to do with our staffing. I expect that that study will find that there are, that there's a lot of demand for our services and there is not a lot of funding that goes with that demand. And so we're going to have to go through the same process we went through for the study bill to be put through to advocate for statewide funding. We're going to have to have an advocacy team that's working statewide. We're going to have to have champions in the legislature that are willing to put it forward. And we're going to have to work it through all of the processes to get it passed. But we've made it halfway. We've made some progress. We've made some awareness statewide. Now it's just a matter of moving forward and getting that through. And I actually didn't plan to talk about this at all for this meeting. But the reason it came up is because I've had a couple of folks contact me in my role for the Library Association and say, what can we do about the horrible wages in our libraries? And I think local advocacy, like Cindy laid out and like we're working on here in Shelburne are great. Not all of our communities, to be really straightforward, in Vermont have the pockets that our citizens have in Stowe or in Shelburne. So there, there's a real social justice issue when it comes to funding libraries adequately for people in communities that don't have the tax base that wealthier communities have. So I think that if you find yourself saying, yes, we'd like to have higher wages, but no, we don't really have a budget that can support it, I think the route really is going to be statewide advocacy for funding to, to even out that funding around the state. So that was my pitch there. Joy, apologies for going off topic, but I felt like I, I wanted to, needed to communicate that. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over and we'll have time for questions from all.
Thank you, Kevin. I, I think it was some, it wasn't exactly the topic we talked about before, but it's so related to this. And, and I just love your pitch for people getting involved and telling their stories because we need to hear the stories. And also you touched on the equity, equity issue where, I mean, the goal is really to have good library service for everybody in Vermont, no matter what town they're in. And, and that's, it's a difficult thing to get, but there is a lot of disparity because of, for a lot of reasons, but some of which you touched on, but I'm really glad that you brought that up. So we do have some time now for questions, comments. Some people are writing things in the chat. People can also raise their hands if they want to share a verbal comment or question, and I will try to keep an eye on that. Looks like there's mostly comments in the chat. I don't see any questions. Anybody want to raise their hand and share? Comments, reactions, questions? Wow, I wasn't expecting this. I thought there'd be a lot. Or if any of the panelists want to share anything else. Okay, there's a question. How can we share stories about our library to support the statewide funding? So that would be through the working bill that Kevin talked about there. I can see if I can find her. Maybe Jeanette, if you have something you could put in the chat about that. It would be contacting Tom McMurdo. But I'm not sure of what the exact process for that is. Thanks, Jeanette. In the meantime, I s-
Joy Howard has a hand up.
Yeah, I'm trying. Okay, so, um, Howard, if you want to unmute yourself. Thanks, Jonathan. There we go. I was trying to see whose hand that was. Or I don't know, can he unmute himself?
I tried.
Okay, there you go. We hear you now.
Thanks. I, I loved this. I, this, this was absolutely wonderful. I'm so glad you did it. I guess I have two questions. One, I commented in the, in the section there about town charters. Town charters change and they can change dramatically. And you can rewrite them and be on the committees that do that. And I think that may be, and I don't know, a really good idea. The other question I wanted to have is, do we have a trustee person on the Vermont Library Association yet? Do you know?
Kevin, do you know that?
I can answer that one. We have someone who's filling the role, but we don't have someone who's in the permanent role. So I would say we are trying to recruit someone, but we're not looking, we're looking for someone who really wants to be engaged. So we're trying to find the right person. If you have someone in mind, I'd love to have a name.
So there's a question in the chat. Can you give any examples of how you develop relationships with the select board members and key issues, concerns you work to address? So Kevin or Cindy or Ruth's thoughts on that?
Well, I can say that relationships with the board are a little tricky because you don't, you can't, you have to make sure, because it's a, it's a governing body in a sense. Ours are advisory and they do make decisions, that you can't, you, you can't develop closer friendships with one and not another without letting everybody know the same information that you're sharing. So everybody has to be on an equal level on information that they gather to make decisions. And so, I mean, you can certainly be a friend with somebody if they come into the library. I have some board members that come into the library often and we talk about books. We never discuss business regarding board decisions or policies or anything like that without having a quorum to, to make decisions on that. I hope that's helpful, but, you know, we, I know in the past, there have been retreats, staff retreats and board retreats. I think those are probably very beneficial. Once COVID's over, I, I would like to pursue that. But otherwise, you know, you have to be careful with, with what you say and the relationships that you, that you create. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you. Kevin or Ruth, do you have anything you would like to add? And what about, I heard the second part of that question was certain issues and things that you find particularly important to share?
So, so this is Ruth again. So for us, we had a select board member whose wife had been a trustee. So that's not something you can really control, but you can try to work towards it. Right now, we have a select board member who was a trustee. And so again, that's just kind of her personal decision. She decided she wanted to be on the select board after having been a trustee. Other than that, you know, you can be friends with people. And our communities in Vermont are small enough that you need to know who your select board members are. And then if you see them at the grocery store or at the bar, we had quite a bit of success sometimes becoming friends with people at bars. You can become their friend. It's absolutely true that you have to be really careful what you talk about. But if they know you're a trustee and they know who you are and that what you say seems rational, then when you come to the select board to present things to them, then you've already got kind of this reputation. They already know who you are. And I think that's really the most important thing. If they don't know the trustees and the trustees just suddenly show up, you have to work a little harder, I think. So I think that's really the point behind getting to know the select board.
Thank you. I wanted to see if anybody on the phone wants to say anything. If so, you can unmute yourself by pushing star six. And you're welcome to do that at any time if you're on the phone. Okay, anybody else have any last comments they want to make or questions? Gary, is there anything you want to add as a wrap-up at the end? Or something you were inspired to share after hearing these?
I don't really. I mean, it's very intriguing to me as a trustee. And, you know, the challenge for us in our relationship, or the way I see it, our relationship with the select board is that, is the turnover of the select board. You know, we start, we try to educate, we try to work with select board members about like, oh, what's the law of the library? I mean, how does the library relate, trustees relate to the select board in governance? And then when you have a lot of turnover, you lose momentum. And so I guess, you know, thinking about it, it just, it takes, it takes constant energy to be applied. And it's a challenge. And I appreciate any trustee board that, you know, is trying to work actively with their town because of that transient nature of the position mostly. But we haven't gone to taverns. I like the idea of, you know, bringing your select board to a tavern program. But we have, you know, met with town administrators separately, select board chair separately, had breakfast together. And, you know, just trying to build that relationship because relationships are built on trust and trust takes a long time to develop. So, but these are these fantastic presentations. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you so much. There's another question. Cindy, you mentioned the wage scale. And is that developed, somebody asked, is that developed by the town or the library?
Okay, so our wage scale for the library is actually, because we are a union municipal department, the wage scale is set by the union. And so it's actually a grid line and there are different levels for different positions. And you bump up according to how long you've been here. But I would say that when I changed, years ago, when I changed, when I made people full-time, I reevaluated their job description so that I can make the case that they could be up higher on that wage scale, that wage level. I don't know what other towns do. I'm sure we also get, we also get a cost of living every new budget season too. So I don't, you know, I know that we're very fortunate here, but there are strict guidelines for everything.
I think this really reminds me of sort of the chain of advocacy because one of the things that Cindy has done is advocate for those employees that you're supervising, right? You're creating a job position that allows them to look on a chart, you know, in an objective way, that they're more valued and respected as an employee. And so that results in better wages. So it starts with, like, if you are not the director, advocate to your director for yourself. And then the director moves to the select board and our trustees and select board. I think that's a really important sort of chain of recognizing that. So Jeanette asks, "Has anybody done a study comparing librarian and town clerk salaries in each town?" Gary, do you have anything like that? I know you have a lot of information, you know, comparisons, but I don't know if you have that exact one.
Hi, Joy. I just, I just pointed Jeanette in the chat.
Okay. And then, let's see, has anyone, what's available for Vermont Library Wage Information? There's an old, several years old by now, Vermont Library Association study about library wages that is not that current, but it actually is informative because a lot of the information on there, many librarians are still not getting paid the amount that was recommended in, I think it was 2012 or 2014 that it was done. And then there is some talk about trying to collect that information more currently. One way you can sort of get some useful information is to look at the annual report because it doesn't break down by job, but it does say how much each library pays for wages in general. So you can't tell who, how much is the director and how much is the other staff, but that is available. We're getting close to running out of time, but it looked like, did somebody have their hand up? Maybe they put it down.
I wanted to mention just one more thing that I don't think we talked about. And that's having your friends group and also your library volunteers work as advocates. I think they're usually the best advocates in the community because they're not politically involved. They're not on the trustees. They're just really people who love the library. So if you can figure out a way to get your volunteers and your friends to advocate for whatever it is the library needs, I think that they're an untapped resource in lots of communities and getting them all on board and, you know, with a unified message is very important.
That is a really good point. They do have a certain freedom to talk about things that, you know, that other people in other roles have to be careful about. And we are at the end of time. I'm going to put a link to an evaluation. It's a short survey about this workshop, if people could do that. I can send it out on the listserv as well, but that's really helpful to us in planning future workshops. And then I also want to do another plug for the upcoming November meetings for trustees. So thank you all for coming and thank you all, the trustees that are on this call. Thank you for being trustees and for supporting your libraries and coming out and doing professional development too. So thank you, everybody. Thank you to the presenters and we'll see you at the next workshop. Thanks.